Oh boy, the little red lights on. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 21 Pumton Board of Selectmen meeting. I am reminded that I am to mention that this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. And to remind all of us that the video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document or an official public record. So, welcome, everyone. We have been in executive session and now we're in open session. So, very first of all, I want to welcome the Selectmen's new administrative assistant, Brigitte Martins Hebert. As I understand it, a lifelong Pumton resident and full of enthusiasm. And we are thrilled to have our new administrative assistant. We welcome you and very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And we thank the the search committee who's had too much experience on searches and hopefully we'll be good on that for a long time. So, we have a set of ground rules. I think maybe I'll dispense with those tonight. Brigitte will have the opportunity to hear those maybe next week. So, what we will do instead is go as we traditionally do to a few moments of silence. To be used for any purpose, simply to quiet down and enjoy a few moments without words. Maybe an opportunity to prepare for the work we have to do tonight. Maybe an opportunity to just have some gratitude for the work that we have to do for the town that we adore. So, a few moments of silence. Okay, so, welcome back, everyone. So, we're expecting now an extremely brief meeting. We thought Blue Wave was going to be in tonight with a new solar proposal, but at the last minute, that schedule changed. We expect them in next week. We think it'll be at 6:00 PM. We'll know that by the end of the week. So, a few other items to deal with and we'll jump right in and hopefully have a quick evening. First on the list is the appointment to the Conservation Commission of Amy Cronin. And so, we received a letter from the Conservation Commission recommending Amy. They were pleased to recommend her for the open seat on the commission. They note that Ms. Cronin is a chemical engineer and has worked extensively with developing regulations and advising the public on how to apply those standards. She and her family have lived in Pumton since 1997. I've known Amy for the last few years. I think maybe I met her during one of the last election campaigns. And I think she's a tremendously talented, dedicated woman. And I am absolutely thrilled that someone of this quality would like to volunteer for the Conservation Commission. So, if there's no other discussion, I would make a motion that we appoint Amy Cronin to the Conservation Commission. The term would be through June 30 of 2016. Do we have that appointment slip around? Did that end up in one of these piles? This pile?
You took it.
I took it? Yeah. Well, while we're looking.
And I took it.
There we go. So, I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thrilled. Amy, thank you so much for coming on. I tend to be on the sort of the pulpit each week, asking, requesting, begging for talented people to come forward. And that's exactly what this is and we're thrilled. So.
I just want to say Amy was on the solar bylaw review committee and she was great. So, you've really got a good person going for you. Excellent.
Okay. So, next is Peg Access Cable Enterprise Fund. We received, I'll pass that down this way.
Thank you.
I forwarded to my fellow Selectmen some correspondence between the Treasurer and the DOR. The DOR is feeling like they're not happy with the enterprise fund that we created at last town meeting as a way to fund our Peg Access stuff. This is a little unfortunate in large part and has a big, long story that goes with it. I'm going to keep it very brief. The enterprise fund was the exact mechanism that Town Council suggested to us as the way to do this. And what has happened along the way is with a new law about how to deal with the accounting of cable license funds going to studios. There's been tremendous confusion in the state. There has been tremendous confusion within the DOR as best I can see. There has been tremendous confusion among Town Councils of the best way to handle this. The enterprise fund is the, was the choice suggested by our Town Council. The Town Council and I went over it and we felt it was the best way. Interestingly enough, when another town in the tri-town studio went to DOR, they got a totally different recommendation on how to do things. In any event, the DOR has offered a different vehicle to do this that we can straighten out at next special town meeting. It's probably the way we'll go. I would ask, or I put this on the agenda tonight. I think if the DOR wants it done this way, there are some disadvantages, but of course it's probably much easier to not argue with the DOR on it. I would like to ask permission of the Board of Selectmen to go back to Lauren Goldberg, who's the managing partner at Huppman and Page, and most spend a half hour just going over this to make sure we're comfortable with how this goes.
Absolutely.
I hate to even start in again. This was such a bag of worms, but I just, you know, I think we did everything right to get it right last time. I don't want to argue with DOR, but I'm not sure there aren't other opinions within the organization. But I just want to get it right once and for all. So, I'll spend very little time and if it's all right with you guys, I'll just spend a little time with Lauren.
Absolutely.
Because it has, because many people are having problems with this and DOR is having problems, do you want to give a little time? I mean, we can't do anything about it until next year anyway.
I do want to talk to the other towns again and see. I will say, and we actually made this clear, and Lauren did make it clear last year, that a brand-new law, no one's sure how to handle it. It had been in effect for three or four months, brand-new. Add to that an unusual situation of a tri-town studio instead of our own studio. And I think this is kind of, they're kind of ongoing opinions. So, at some point, I'll go to Lauren, maybe not right away if that's what you're alluding to. And we'll just see how it shakes out.
Well, won't Carver and Halifax be in the same boat?
Well, you know, they each have gotten totally different opinions along the way too.
Some of them.
It really, ironically enough, it turns out to be maybe mainly just an accounting issue. And it, when all this came up last November, what was so clear is that DOR offers opinions that they feel like are the rule of law. Town Council offers different opinions that they think are the rule of the law that also. And it is one of those things that there are just a lot of opinions. I think we were forewarned that maybe this would be an ongoing evolution of the best way to deal with it. It really doesn't change anything more than kind of an accounting thing of which cubbyhole it goes to and the very subtle differences between an enterprise fund and a revolving account. You have to love this stuff to get deep into it. All right, well, we won't belabor that. So, at some point, I'll spend a little time. We'll have it on the radar for special town meeting next spring.
Okay.
Okay, let's see.
Do you want to vote? Do you want to motion and vote to get permission to go to Town Council?
Okay. So, I make a motion that the Board authorized me to go to Town Council for some brief consultation on my enterprise fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, you know, before we get on to the other stuff, I wanted to stay at the top. Yesterday was the dog adoption day run by the Girl Scouts on the town green. It was the cutest little bit of Americana. And what's absolutely cool about Pumton, the turnout was amazing. There was a little petting zoo. There was a little pony there and some goats and a whole bunch of dogs. It was so sweet. It's the, it's what Pumton does best. And I want to particularly mention Karen Foye, who organized the whole thing, the Girl Scouts who put it on. Great show, great show. Yeah, I think it was intended to be a one-time dog adoption, part of a Girl Scout project. That was so cool and so many people showed up. I think this is kind of a groundswell. This should be an every-year thing. Next year, we're going to have Dale in as a judge of the dog costumes.
You were a judge and Deb Anderson and Pastor Nan.
Pastor Nan and a couple others. And they paraded by these dogs in costumes. It was just hilarious. Luckily, each dog and each walker of dog got a prize and won something. Very, very sweet. We had, my wife and I had friends in from New York City, actually a very sophisticated bunch of people, and they just were enthralled. You know, I think they have the idea that this is the way Massachusetts always is. We had to let them know how unique Pumton is, how really unique Pumton is.
I hope you got some pictures.
All right.
Now, did they have dogs to actually adopt?
Yeah.
Where did the dogs come from?
From shelters. There was one shelter, what do they call it? Their forever owner. That, I'd actually never heard that phrase. I think maybe even though I'm kind of in that biz, but rescued dogs were finding their forever home, their forever new home. And of course, dogs are finding their forever new home. It's like forever grateful and just a sweet afternoon.
Oh, very nice.
All right, go ahead.
They had a kissing booth.
No way. You weren't in it. Were you?
With a golden retriever.
Yeah, right. Ooh, we could make money for the town that way because no one would come.
Water ducking tag?
Oh, that's funny. Yeah, water ducking tag, we'd be all over that.
So, you know, each week, I do usually in the ground rules say that it's serious work we do, but we can bring along some joy and laughter. So, all right, we check that off for the month in any event. All right, that's the work. So, we're up to continuing to discuss and plan the Board's goals and priorities. Public Safety Building Committee is?
We haven't met since, yeah, two weeks. We meet this coming Wednesday, 6:00 in this room on the 21st. So, if anybody's interested, please come.
All right. DOR report.
All right. We had a meeting last week on September 17th and we had a really nice meeting. And basically, the consensus is that this is, the DOR report is kind of the starting point for other areas that need to be looked at as well. And this has kind of given us a jumpstart into, you know, other committees that may need to be formed down the road. We suggested a government study committee to look at, you know, where the town is heading and whether it's best to have all of people elected as they currently are or whether, you know, we should move to some more appointed positions. So, that was a suggestion they had. They suggested that we put legal out to bid when that is up, that we looked at possibly going to more of a fixed cost program rather than by the hour, that that might be beneficial to us. And then also in the DOR report, they suggested that we put the auditing out to bid when that contract is up, that we've had the same company doing it for, I think about 10 years. And they just thought that that was a DOR recommendation. So, we agreed with that. We talked about personnel where we thought, you know, we might be going down the road, whether we thought we needed some more financial guidance with possibly like a CFO position or getting a financial consultant or retainer to assist. And that we need to put together some type of, we need to put together financial policies and come up with a plan for finances. We talked about, let's see, what else did we talk about? John Trainer reported he had a really nice meeting with Mrs. Moran and Mrs. Gomez to go over, you know, what their day-to-day tasks are. Said he felt really comfortable after that, that they had indeed addressed a lot of the internal control issues in the DOR report. And they have been wonderful to work with and very forthcoming with information and helping us along the way to understand. And they have a really good handle on items that were pointed out. What we suggested was coming up with a spreadsheet work action list for us to stay on track with getting things done. And I put together a, kind of a rough draft of what this might look like with Selectmen, action items, with what Colleen's doing on the Public Safety Building Committee, what I've got doing going for DOR. I just added the enterprise fund, you know, with the due date of special town meeting, tasks for Dale, things that we had talked about before with the fixed cost spreadsheet, which we're going to need for the DOR. Colleen is going to need a complete evaluation of the Center Street property and you needed some amended engineering study for Palmer Site. Things that we need to get done in order to work towards our goals. So, it just might be easier for us to manage the many tasks that we need to do if this is kind of a working document where, you know, things will be added and things will be deleted as they're completed, but it might help us stay on task to be, to really get the things done that we need to do. So, that was a recommendation of the DOR committee that we adopt a worksheet to get our tasks done.
Great.
So, I brought in an example and, you know, it's something that we may want to adopt just to, so nothing falls through the cracks or to the best of our ability anyway.
So, do we have to take action on deciding we want to do a worksheet? Is that a concept?
No. I think that we can just decide that we want to do this. What I had put on for Dale's list was a five-year fixed cost spreadsheet. And this has got due dates with a progress update, you know, notes. Then, a monthly communication meeting with department heads to gather hiring policies from other Massachusetts towns. That was a DOR task. DOR is gather financial policies from other Massachusetts towns. DOR is gather job descriptions for all town employees. A general would be the Spring Street Carver Industrial Park and just kind of how to proceed and info we might need for town meeting. The building committee would be complete the evaluation of Center Street property and that would need to be done as quickly as possible. And the last thing I had under the Town Coordinator was acquire amended engineering study of Palmer Street Site. And that had a tentative due date of 9/23.
It's already on your radar.
Yeah.
It's just kind of capturing things that we know are out there.
Yeah, it's just, right, clarifying. And then, under us, we've got the Public Safety Building Committee and that's, Colleen's working on that. And I don't know, you know, there would be things to add, little, you know, one-offs about, you know, what she needs to do and, you know, deadlines for town meeting and, you know, all these different things that need to be done. I had for the DOR, the financial tasks and we'd like to have all of that completed by town meeting. There really isn't anything we need to vote at town meeting, but we really wanted to tighten up our financial policies prior to town meeting. So, it's already, most of it's already been done or some things that still need to happen. We needed to adopt a hiring policy. We wanted to try to get that, we thought that was another high priority and we wanted to try to get that done by town meeting. We need to do, the DOR needs, as recommended, a financial policy. I don't have a date on that. The general would be job descriptions for all town employees because wage and personnel is going to need that. General would be the town email, which is, we're working on now. The community compact would be a general thing. I have applied for that. We're waiting to hear from the DOR. And then, now we've got the revolving account for the cable, which would need to be addressed by special town meeting. So, it just is, you know, just an.
Are you going to keep this list or are we going to pass this into?
I can keep the list and we could, or yeah, Brigitte could keep it. And I would suggest we either review it, you know, weekly or bi-weekly so that we can stay on track with where we are with, you know, things that need to be completed.
Why don't we just, intended to be on the agenda every week as part of our goals and priorities?
Perfect.
Because really, it's the driver of that.
All it is, is right, just stating them out and the tasks.
So, I'll add that. I love the, I love your suggestion. I am so appreciative of the DOR Report Committee. It's what we envisioned a year and a half ago when we had the DOR come in. And so many of these things are proactive instead of reactive. So, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. Well, it was John Trainer's suggestion. It was a very good suggestion. Absolutely. I'll email it to you tomorrow. But, you know, like I said, this is going to be a working document and things may change. And we can talk about it next week. And that way, Dale will have had a chance to look at some of the due dates that we've come up with on items that are going to sign to him, whether it's feasible or not, so that, you know, that we're all on the same page.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Okay. Okay, on all that?
Yes.
Future Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled, every Monday night except Columbus Day through the end of October. A week from Wednesday night, that is September 30th. We have an executive session with the Board at 6:00 PM with Town Council for ongoing legal matters. 7:00 PM, Town Council update and training for Boards, Committees and Commissions. I had Tom Clerk send out a save the date thing last week and I'll have her send out another one this week. We hope as chairs, but also members of all town Boards, Committees and Commissions will come, old timers and new timers alike. Good opportunity, really good opportunity to kind of proactively find out stuff and hopefully stay out of trouble. Which actually brings up the issue of the fixed town council, which I think has so much merit in terms of anyone feeling like they can go get a question answered, any board and committee, before they get into trouble, before we get into complication. The potential is cost-effective in the long run. Let's see. So, that's our schedule. You have something?
Well, actually, I didn't notice that solar had been taken off the agenda.
Boy, I missed that this week.
Scanned it really quickly.
Okay.
Somebody sent me a question. If you want to put solar back on for next week or do you want me to discuss it now?
Well, can we consider it part of correspondence? And it is, I'm okay with that.
Mm-huh. Absolutely.
So, basically, the solar bylaw has gone to the Attorney General. And we won't get their response or their acceptance of the change until mid-October. So, this person wondered what happens if somebody brings a project forward now. Town meeting has already approved the change by law. The Attorney General has not. So, is this something that we need to ask the town attorney?
No.
Okay, what's the answer then?
It's effective as it's written. And the only thing that would change that would be Town Council. So, if somebody brings it in, they fall under the new amended solar bylaw, even though the Attorney General hasn't approved it. Should the Attorney General change it for some reason, then obviously that would change whatever request people put in. But that law stands.
As of town meeting.
And as a zoning bylaw, it stands from the exact time it was.
Good. All right, I will email them back. Thank you.
And actually, while we're sort of on days to remember, or dates to remember, I was asked to remind people that everyone who has land in Chapter 61 needs to have their application in by October 1st. Apparently, one of, we're one of the few towns where the assessors do not send out a reminder each year. So, please, folks, if you're part of the Chapter 61 program, October 1st, deadline for an application. Okay, that brings us to the Town Coordinator report.
Briefly, Blue Wave has been scheduled for their PPA proposal next week at 6:00. The engineering company informed me that they'll be doing preliminary perks, digging holes on Center Street this week. And that always gives you a good idea of where the perk would go. And they've got the information coming in from me to set them up with the Board of Health. So, that's on schedule and that will be done. And then the other, I have the information on query checking. And essentially, you set it up with the state and we can set, we can set it up here. It would require someone here to actually open the account with the state. They need a full name, date of birth, social security number, address, phone number and valid email address. And then, we'd be able to do e-cory, i-cory, which is the Cory Light, I like to call it. And then, I mean, so that's up to the Board. That's a Board decision. And then, who gets Cory? That's also a Board decision, whether, I mean, employees, you know, new hires and wherever else you want to go with it. But again, that would be a Board decision.
So, is it cost with any of this?
No, I don't believe there is. As a municipality, I think.
So, the two things we'd have to do is appoint someone to go through to become the Cory Light czar and then decide either now or decide get someone trained and then at some point decide when we want to use that opportunity.
You've got to institute a policy as to where you were going to use it, whether you were going to use it for all new hires and employees, which is not necessarily a bad idea. And then, if you want to reach out from there to other things, that's also, you know, also a Board decision. I don't know that it's, I don't know what level it's done in other communities, so.
Okay. So, are we interested in appointing someone to become the Cory Light person? And if so, Town Coordinator, is that the right place?
Should be in your office because you're ultimately in charge of all the hires and hiring would probably be the first place you would do it. So, I would say it would be somewhere through the Board of Selectmen's office, either myself or Brigitte or anybody else. Or one of you.
I'd say either of those positions.
Yeah.
Okay, we got it down to two.
Okay.
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 Let's give it to Brigitte.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I'll send you the link tomorrow.
And why don't we spend a little time thinking about creating a policy?
Yeah, why don't we, yeah. We'll put that on the worksheet.
All right.
Yay.
Good. All right.
All right.
And other things from you, Dale?
No, that would be it for me.
Okay. Well, my goodness, that brings us to correspondence.
Okay.
I, or I'll let you go first.
No, go ahead. No, you can go first.
All right. So, I had a couple email correspondences that I wanted to bring up. I guess, did we all get this? Well, just in case we didn't and for everyone to know, we got an email from the co-chair of the Open Space Committee. Maybe I'll just read it. "The purpose of this memo is for the Open Space Committee to inform the Board of Selectmen about the following motion, which was approved at our meeting last Friday." That is the Open Space Committee meeting, September 11. "The Open Space Committee recommends to the Board of Selectmen that unknown risks preclude moving forward to acquire the property at 59 Parsonage Road. For that reason, the Open Space Committee will not be submitting a CPC application for that purpose. We have notified the USDA office in Amherst that the Board of Selectmen is now the point of contact with Pumton." Blah, blah, blah. And so, that's the main point. So, at this point, we are waiting to hear from the USDA. As I think we discussed last week, there was a representative that was down in Washington seeing what they could do about funding a Phase II environmental study. And God only knows where it goes from there, but for the time being, it doesn't look like Open Space is going to move forward on it. We'll see what happens next. And then, one more bit of correspondence. And actually, this is more on the date to remember. Forgive me for bouncing around a little. That's what happens with over-caffeinated minds. So, October 18th is going to be the opening of Churchill Park, the official opening. It's going to be sort of a low-key event, but an opening celebration, probably in the afternoon, October 18th, which is a Sunday, followed by guided hikes and some fun park games. And keep an eye out in the town website, the newspaper. And I will tell people that I had the opportunity last weekend to walk the boardwalk, to see all the planks. And it is absolutely. to see all the planks and it is absolutely amazing. And it actually goes back a little bit, a little like the flavor of the event on the town green yesterday that just felt a little unique, a little special. The boardwalk's amazing, all those planks, all those people that were part of it. So don't miss that opening, October 18th or any time thereafter, it's special. Okay, now that's my little pitch. And now I turn over the correspondence to you.
All right, from South Shore Community Action Council, we got a letter about some of their activities and they have been, their mission is to fight poverty on the South Shore. Together, they've helped 27,419 people in the past year alone. They distributed the equivalent of 451, 942 meals to hungry and food insecure people, particularly the young and the elderly. The fuel assistance program kept 10,721 homes warm during the record-breaking snow and cold of the past winter. Their early education program provided 535 preschool children with a supportive and stimulating educational environment. The transportation program gave 1,267 elderly and disabled people over 146,000 trips to and from vital medical and rehabilitation appointments. And let's see, their CDO training and job placement program trained, licensed and placed 33 unemployed people, six of whom had been homeless and new jobs earning an average of $21 an hour. And their volunteer income tax assistance program assisted 652 low-income workers with free tax preparation, resulting in $1,277,380 in refunds. So they've done a lot of very good work to help our friends and neighbors. They, let's see, is this the same thing? Okay, South Shore Community Action Council's first annual pumpkin run, October 24th. It's a 5K, it starts at 71 Aubrey Street in Plymouth. Walk, race, walk or run for fun in community. So I don't know if that's something that we could, you probably have seen that, get on the website.
Dale might be doing a 5K run.
Yeah. And then you each got a nice letter from Teresa Jordan thanking you for meeting with her to discuss the selectmen's assistant position. And that's all I've got in correspondence.
Wow.
I don't even have a paper this time, sorry. It's been a rough week with, you know, interrupts, so I'm sure it's here. It probably just didn't make its way into them.
Yeah, we've been in transition.
For a couple of weeks.
A paper was published last week.
Absolutely, it was, it was.
And we were, we were below the fold, always good when we stay out of the paper. All right, so we're up to minutes and...
And I don't have one.
Okay, so we, luckily, at least they are on cable, there are sort of a synopsis in the newspaper. Will we have them for next week, we should catch up?
I hope so.
We should have them next week.
You don't write in shorthand, do you?
No, I don't even write in longhand.
Well...
Let it know, Rijay could help you.
There's been a plethora of like works.
Typing it up.
Yeah, poke them a little.
This is my first one, I need to look.
Poke them, do we give you permission? All right, I think we did it.
There you go.
Any last words from, from the audience, from the big table? All right, well, I guess we did it, pretty much in record time. So next week, we'll have Blue Wave in, it'll be a good chance to see what they're up to and a nice opportunity potentially for Pumpkin. We thank everyone for coming and why don't we do it again next week? Thanks very much, okay?
Thank you.